Study locations that I just mentioned, Hicktown Road, Garwood, Jarvis, and Berlin Cross Keys to the east. So those counts were done in October.
You're missing one.
Those counts were done in October 2021. They were done from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM on a typical weekday, and they were done from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM in the afternoon on a typical weekday as well. The reason for the extended afternoon counts going from 2:00 to 6:00 is because of the schools in the area. We wanted to make sure that we evaluated the roadway conditions not only under the peak times associated with the commuter traffic to and from work, but we also wanted to ensure that we would capture any traffic associated with the schools, both in the morning and in the afternoon. Typically, schools let out around 3:00 o'clock, so it's a little bit earlier than you would see the commuter times for the, uh, for the, uh, for the traffic associated with people going to and from work. So what we found when we did our traffic counts, we look at the busiest one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon. The AM peak hour for this area is approximately from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM. The PM peak hour is at approximately 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM. So once we've established the existing base conditions in this area, we want to look at the anticipated traffic that would be generated by this site. So as you've already heard, the site's approximately 1.5 million square feet of warehouse or distribution space. And in order to try and come up, try and project the anticipated trips, we go to the Institute of Transportation Engineers. The Institute of Transportation Engineers is a country, is a national organization. They go out and they do actual studies at existing facilities throughout the country. They compile that data into traffic and trip generation rates that we then utilize and apply to new developments, whether it's warehouse, residential, commercial, restaurants, et cetera. So in this case, we looked at this site as what we call a high cube fulfillment or distribution facility. It's a slightly more intensive from a traffic perspective use than your standard speculative warehouse buildings. Typically, you see a little bit more employee base for a distribution facility, so we wanted to be as conservative as we could when we looked at the traffic to be generated by this site. So I want to talk a little bit about warehouses just generally from a traffic perspective. What you see a lot of times with a warehouse is that it will operate 24/7, and it will operate with shifts. And those shifts typically have a primary shift during the day. They have a slightly reduced shift in the, later in the afternoon or the evening times, and then a lot of times there's a very minimal shift overnight depending on the final tenant. So what I've noticed doing a lot of warehouses throughout New Jersey is that that primary shift time typically is scheduled by the owner or the operator or the tenant to ensure that it's not during the peak of the existing roadway network around you. And what that means is a lot of times is the peak or the shift time will start at 6:00 AM in the morning rather than 8:00 AM or 9:00 AM when, you know, there's a lot of additional trips already on the road around there, so that those trips associated with the employees coming in and out for the shifts can be off-peak from the existing roadway conditions. And the same way in the afternoon, a lot of times you'll see they'll try and stagger the shifts so that they'll let out prior to the evening rush and after, you know, kind of traffic is starting to dissipate in the afternoon as well. So what you'll see from a traffic perspective with warehouses is that there's like an ebb and a flow to the traffic. So the primary, uh, trip or the primary traffic points for a warehouse are basically when you have the shift changes occurring. So you'll see an increase in traffic associated with these sites in the morning when you have people arriving for the daytime shift, and then you'll see an increase in traffic in the afternoon when you have those people leaving the site, and you have the afternoon or the second shift people coming in as well. The rest of the time throughout the day, you really don't see a significant amount of passenger vehicle traffic associated with warehouses. Typically, the employees are there for the entire shift. There's not a lot of in and out passenger vehicle. It's not like a retail establishment or a commercial site where you have customers and patrons and things like that. It's really just a, um, employee-based, shift-based, uh, traffic generator. Now, we also obviously have to deal with truck traffic and trucks associated with a warehouse. And what we find with trucks is that typically tractor-trailers avoid the peak roadway conditions for an area. So truck traffic typically will start to pick up later in the morning, around 10:00 or so in the, in the morning. It will continue until 2:00 or 3:00 or maybe 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon, and then it will start to dissipate down as well during those peak times because typically trucks and the drivers want to avoid the congestion that comes with mixing them in with the passenger vehicles on the roadway network around there. So when you look at this site, you do, you know, you obviously have both passenger vehicle and truck traffic. The majority of the traffic generated by these sites is the passenger vehicles associated with those employees coming in and out. Obviously, there's tractor-trailer traffic, but comparatively to the passenger vehicle trips, it's much less. And especially during the peak hours, when we do our traffic study, the majority of the traffic we anticipate will be those employee-based trips or passenger vehicles and not tractor-trailers. I apologize for the mask, and it makes it a little harder to breathe, but just want to make sure you understand me. All that being said, we go to the trip generation analysis. We want to determine how many additional trips this site would generate during the AM and the PM peak hour. So based upon the IT rates and based upon the size of the proposed development, it's anticipated that the site will add approximately four to five trips per minute during both the AM and the PM peak hour to the roadway network around you. So once we've determined those trips, then we want to distribute those trips along the roadway network and ensure that we can provide access for those trips. So the distribution was done by looking at the existing flow of traffic along Sicklerville Road and the nearby study locations to the east and the west. Based on that distribution, it's anticipated that the majority of the traffic will really be pretty evenly distributed to the east and the west. There's some peaks where it's a little bit higher to the east towards Berlin Cross Keys, but overall, it's about 50/50, 60/40 split between the two approaches. So as far as access is concerned, obviously, you've heard from Mr. Fleming, we have a single point of access here on westbound Sicklerville Road. It's a county road. It's going to require county approval for any access that we are, you know, that we propose. Any improvements associated with that access will require the approval of the Camden County Planning Board and the Camden County Engineering Office. The proposal based on the anticipated trips is for a new signalized intersection here at this driveway to be able to accommodate the trips associated with this project and to provide for that safe and efficient access. Basically, we're looking at a T-shaped signalized intersection between the driveway and Sicklerville Road. The anticipation is that we would, we would widen Sicklerville Road to include a left-turn lane in the eastbound direction. That would include a left-turn lead phase that would allow left turns into the site. And then on the outbound side, we obviously have the boulevard entrance and exit. We would have two outbound lanes, one for left turns and one for right turns. So in order to evaluate not only the operations of our driveway, but to determine if there's any off-peak or off-site, uh, impacts from our traffic, we do what's called a level of service analysis. So levels of service are a way for us to evaluate the, uh, delays experienced by motorists and vehicles traveling along a roadway network specifically through study locations. Levels of service go from a level service A, meaning you experience minimal delays, down to a level service F, meaning you experience delays where you're maybe sitting for one or two cycles at a signal, or it may take you one or two cycles to get through a signal, depending on what the locations are. So under existing conditions, uh, of the four signalized intersections that we studied, Hicktown, Garwood, Jarvis, and Berlin Cross Keys, uh, all those intersections operate at overall level service B during both the AM and the PM peak hours today. Uh, the intersection of Berlin Cross Keys and Sicklerville Road operates at an overall level service E during both the AM and the PM peak hours today. When we look to the future, when we add in the additional traffic from our site, the overall levels of service at all those intersections will remain as they are today, with the exception of one intersection, the intersection of Garwood.
That's impossible.
We're only prolonging the meeting if we have to stop. Please. Yeah, we're gonna have to start telling people to go out.
Police are here.
All right?
You know, the applicant deserves every courtesy. You will get the same courtesy when you speak. We're just trying to hear the applicant. The acoustics in here is not the best. It's difficult to hear up here. I'm sure it's difficult for you to hear down there.
Stop being rude.
The background makes it even more difficult. And if the only way to get this thing resolved is to have the police remove some people, that's what we're gonna do, because it's very difficult to hear what's going on.
Extremely rude. Continue.
Sure. Thank you. So the only exception will be at the intersection of Sicklerville and Garwood where we'll operate an overall level service C during the PM peak hour. As far as our driveway is concerned, the intersection being signalized will operate an overall level service B during both the AM and the PM peak hour, and all individual movements will operate with good levels of service as well. So obviously, we're obviously just talking about the use variance now. When it comes to site plan, uh, site plan, if it goes to that next level, there will be full design plans and information provided relative to the full design of that intersection. Uh, any improvements, any off-site, uh, impacts or mitigation that would be required will come from Camden County as they have jurisdiction over all the intersections along Sicklerville Road. They will review the exact same traffic study that your board would review here as well for a site plan application. They will review all that. They will evaluate it. They will question it, I'm sure, provide comments. And if they have any concerns relative to the operations of any of the intersections along Sicklerville Road and any impact of our traffic at those intersections, then they will have the ability and the jurisdiction to require any improvements or mitigation as they see fit, as it is their roadway and their jurisdiction. But for the purpose of the use variance, based on the traffic analysis that we've done and provided, based upon the improvements and providing a signalized intersection here at the driveway location on Sicklerville Road, I do believe it, and it's my opinion, that we can provide for that safe and efficient access for traffic entering and exiting this site, and that the off-site, uh, impacts will be minimal, and if there's mitigation required at some point down the road, that will be obviously under the jurisdiction of Camden County, uh, in the future. So I believe that's my summary.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bushley.
Thanks.
Any questions from the board?
Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Mr., I might from, I'm sorry, board members, from, from, from the board's engineer, I just wanted to talk about your level of service analysis a little bit more. That, again, that, that's essentially how long, you know, um, there's levels of service represented how long someone might wait on light. So you talked about how the levels of service are sort of similar, existing and proposed, but in, in the report, there, there are some particular movements where the level of service is going to decrease. In other words, vehicles would have, motorists would have to wait longer. For example, um, I'm just looking at Sicklerville and Hicktown, um, level of service decreases eastbound on Sicklerville Road, left turn movement. Is that right? So there is going to be some degradation, some, some, you know, decrease in level of service kind of peppered throughout those intersections? Is that what the report says?
Yeah, so it does show that some of the individual movements at some of the locations may decrease as a result of additional trips being added to the intersections, but the overall levels of service for those intersections experienced by all the vehicles in combination during those peak hours will not change otherwise, unless I stated otherwise, at the one intersection with Garwood, when you compare the future conditions without and with our site traffic being added.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else with a board? Questions?
Yeah. Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
We heard earlier there's like 1,300 and some parking spaces. Were those cars or many trucks, whatever is going to be used, figured into your calculations?
So the, the trip generation analysis that we do for any warehouse use is not predicated on parking spaces. It's predicated upon the square footage of the building. Uh, ITE has, the Institute of Transportation Engineers have done extensive studies, and the correlating factor is always the square footage of the building correlated to the number of trips generated. It's not based upon parking. Parking is typically more just a, um, what's the way to say it? It's a, um, it's, it's giving, the, the parking here gives us the flexibility for potential tenants as well as to meet the requirements of the town. It's not necessarily a factor that directly relates to trip generation, especially for warehouse uses. When you're talking about speculative buildings and we don't know the future tenants, uh, the trips to be generated really are mostly, are, are most accurately done just based on the square footage of those buildings, and that's how we do studies for all these sites throughout the state, not only my office, but any other traffic engineers as well.
The other question I had too is obviously there's going to be a lot of tractor-trailers here.
Yes.
What is your estimate per day of how many tractor-trailers are going in and out?
So, yeah, so the estimate during the peak hour times would be about 10 to 15% of the total trips generated during that peak hour. So in the AM or the PM peak hour, we would be anticipating about 30 to 35 tractor-trailer trips during the AM and PM peak hours. Like I said, typically, the tractor-trailer trips are outside of the peak times. Uh, overall, based upon the ITE trip generation rates, uh, I believe that this site would be looking at around, um, 1,500 tractor-trailer trips per day, given the square footage.
1,500 per day?
So 1,500 trips. So a trip is a, either an inbound or an outbound movement. So if you assume that every truck that arrives departs, that would be approximately 750 trucks per day.
Come on, Fox, we're trying to just stop.
And that's over a 24-hour period for all 15, or all 1.5 million square feet of the site.
So these 1,500 trucks, that taken into consideration? For example, if a tractor-trailer is making a left-hand turn, takes a whole heck of a lot longer than a, than a car, correct?
Yes.
That figured in as to the time of delay, the backup of cars? Because I think everybody's concern here is traffic on Sicklerville Road.
Sure.
We're just seeing to a layperson, that 1,500 tractor-trailers going up and down Sicklerville Road. It's gotta have some effect.
So it's...
Really, I don't need applause. I'm just here to ask questions and try and do a job for the township, trying to be fair to the applicant, trying to be fair to you. So this is a very fair board. I think you'll find that. But we do ask, please, just to be quiet, let us finish. I don't need applause. I'm sorry.
To answer your question, it's a good question. So it is, it's 750 trucks, it's 1,500 trips, but it's 750 trucks on a daily basis. But as far as your question...
There's going to be some trucks going in and out for a long time.
So to answer your question about how we look at those truck trips, uh, when we do our traffic counts, all the traffic counts that we did, we specifically count existing tractor-trailer movements at those study locations when we're out there. So we specifically count those, and we take that percentage, and we put that into our model when we're establishing our base conditions. And then we do adjust accordingly, um, to account for the additional trucks that are anticipated to be generated by the site when we look at the future conditions. So that is accounted for in the model, a certain percentage of your trips and your movements at each location may or may not be tractor-trailers, and we do factor that in when we do our analysis.
The other question I had too, in reading the, the report, and again, I'm not an engineer, but I think in every one, at the Sicklerville Road and Hicktown, no matter where it was, you mentioned based upon minimal changes in levels of service. What, can you define what minimal means?
Typically, minimal change in level of service would be going from a level service B to a level service C. So it would be one change in, in level of service from a B to a C, a C to a D. That would be a minimal change.
In all of these, the level of service is changing?
I'm not...
When you mentioned minimal change, I, I was confused with that.
Not every intersection necessarily had a change in level of service, but a, as your engineer pointed out, there are certain individual movements at some of the locations that do change levels of service when you add in the additional traffic from our site. However, as I kind of explained, the overall levels of service at each location really do not change during the AM or PM peak hour when you look at all the trips, um, going through those intersections now and in the future, for all the existing traffic plus our traffic.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Continue.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Dottie?
Mr. Dottie, you are an acoustical engineer, correct? Yes, I am.
And you were retained by the applicant to perform acoustical studies in regard to the proposed warehouse use?
That's correct.
Uh, could you please advise the board and the public as to your findings?
Uh, some, some background, because that forms the basis for why I did what I did. The state of New Jersey has a statewide noise regulation, NJAC 7:29. I'm an appointed member of the State Noise Control Council that writes that, so I think I know it pretty well.
Keep that closer, so everybody can hear.
Do you mean sound? Yeah. This is audio. I'm acoustics different. Okay, so the state noise regulation sets limits for commercial or industrial sources emitting to commercial, industrial, or residential receivers. It's a little more complicated than I'll explain it, but basically the limit for a commercial or industrial operation to a residential receiver, which is really what the issue is, is during the daytime, day being 60, from 10, um, 10, yeah, daytime is 7:00 AM until 10:00 PM. Night is 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. During the day, the limit is 65, 65 dBA, and at night is 50, 50 dBA. dBA...
Explain what that is.
You read my mind. dBA is a commonly used measure of sound, used throughout the world, probably the most common metric of sound there is. It measures sound in a way that relates very well with how loud sounds are to people. There's many, many different ways to measure sounds. There's all sorts of sounds. I can generate sounds that you can't hear, either at the very low frequency range or the very high frequency range. So dBA is meant, is based on how people hear. So the, the state metric, in fact, if you go all the way back to the early 70s when the, uh, regulation was first developed, the daytime limit of 65 is predicated on speech interference. Two people standing normal conversational distance, this would be pre-COVID, of course, carrying on a conversation, normal levels, create at each other's ear about 65. So that gives you a measure of what, what is 65. The 50 limit is predicated on, uh, sleep disturbance. So what limit do we use here? Well, when we do our analysis, I assume that this operation is going to operate 24/7, so nighttime. So therefore, the, the, the most stringent criteria they have to meet is 50 dBA for the residential receivers. So that's what we base it on. So with that as background, one of the things, we look at two things. One of them is the existing sound levels in an area, the ambient sounds. So if this is downtown Newark, you're going to have one set of ambient sounds. If it's a cornfield in the middle of South Jersey somewhere, well, it's pretty quiet. So what is it here? And then in turn, how, what sort of sounds can we expect from this operation? Now, remember, we've got the state noise regulation to contend with, which says we can't make more than 50. And just so you know, that, that's a lot of hypothetical thing. The, the state noise regulation is a performance standard, meaning they have to meet it. So a simple answer to the question about this application is, we'll meet the noise regulation. We have to. And then you might say, well, how do we know? What's going to make that happen? The answer is that the county, you, you, by the way, do not have a state-proved noise ordinance, but if you did, you could enforce it, but the limits would be the same as the You need to look at the noise regulation, see why that is, but it is. So the counties do the actual enforcement for the state. They're, they're paid, the NJDEP pays the county, usually through the Health Department, through a program called C-H-A, to do noise enforcement. So the county has equipment, the county has trained people, and if there's an issue that comes up, and that's not true just here, but any thing really, they, you, they can call the county, talk to them, and they will come out and do a noise study. And if it's in, in violation, they can issue a notice of violation or an NOV. They can generate fines. And I have actually seen cases where it went up to a court and they got, and they put a cease and desist on them to shut them down. So there's teeth in the thing. So that's what we have to deal with, and this operation now, five years from now, is going to have to continue to meet that requirement. So with that as background, let's talk about the ambient sound levels that are out there I'll show this to you folks in just a moment. So what we did, here, here's an aerial...
That'll be A16. You want to mark that?
Okay. A16 is a graphic, uh, titled Gloucester Township, New Jersey Ambient Sound Levels. On it are six graphics. One of them is an aerial photograph of the area, and on it are five numbered markers showing the location where we made sound measurements. The other five graphs are the results of the measurements at those five locations. Uh, what we did was we, we have a series of environmental sound monitors. I went out to the site, this was back in, uh, August of last year, set up these monitors and let them run around the clock for three days, 24 hours a day. They measured the sound level, the dBA that's used in the, in the noise standard, and we let them run for the 24, 24 times three hours, 72 hours at each location, and then we can then see what the sound levels are out there now. These are sound levels that come from everything else, but they don't come from this operation because this operation didn't exist. So it's everything else. And if we look at that, and that's these bar graphs here for each location, and they show the fluctuating sound levels. The bars are one-hour increments, and they show, the, the bar shows the minimum to maximum sound level during that hour. There's a little blue square on each hour, and that shows the average sound level for that area. There's a green up and down line that shows the limit of what the site is allowed to generate. Now, the site, any site, is not responsible for the other sounds around it. So if you look at the graph and say, wow, gee, from, at this particular time, uh, at 8:00 in the morning on, uh, August 13th, it was 70, 69 dBA out there, maximum. So gee, if you're, if you're out there, that's over what you're allowed to produce, so you can't do anything. No, that's not true. The site has its limits. The ambient is a completely different matter. So for the folks, if I may, by any show, this, by the way, is in my report, which is provided to the town. So here's the upper left-hand corner is the aerial photograph with the little markers showing where the measurements were made, and then each one of those graphs that, with all the jaggies on it, are the sound measurements over the three days at each one of those locations. There's also a little table on each one that has some statistics, because us engineers love statistics. At the first location, which is in the upper part of the graphic of the site, sound level over the three days was above 50 dBA. Remember, 50 is our nighttime target. We can't make more than that. But right now, the sound levels out there were above 50, a little over 47% of the time. This is without us, without the site being present. At location number two, we're moving a little more down towards the, the road and the, the expressway and so on. It was above 50, 75% of the time. At location number three, it was above 50, 73% of the time, a little more. At location four, it was above 50, 91% of the time. And at location five, 82% of the time. So measurements out of the site show that there's sound out there. There's a bunch of sound, and often it's above what the site at its maximum is allowed to generate. So keep that in mind, if you would, please.
Did it define what type of sound?
It's the ambient, not from the site. It's not from this site. That's what, that's what the ambient is. It's everything else. It's going, it's going to be, it's everything. Everything. So, uh, that would include aircraft, uh, certainly in general, and looking at the pattern to how the sound levels change throughout the day, it's primarily motor vehicle traffic. You have the Atlantic City Expressway, you have Sicklerville Road there, you have local traffic, just, everybody living makes sound. It's not horribly loud out there, but it's not silent, and the sounds that are permitted to come from this site are by no means out of character with what's out there already. And in many cases are quieter than a lot of the sounds that are out there now. That doesn't mean that you'll never hear anything, you'll never hear a truck or anything like that, but those, what you do know is that those sounds can't exceed what they're permitted. And if they, again, if they do, call up the county and have them come out and do a noise study on them.
Yes.
So that's the first thing that we did. The second thing we did then is obviously, to me anyway, how much sound's going to come from the operations here? And what can we, if we have to, what can we do about it? Well, we know what the limits are, so how do we figure out what the sounds are from a site that doesn't? a site that doesn't exist? If it was an existing facility, we go out there and we measure them. But it isn't. Right now, it's an abandoned golf course.
That'll be A-17.
A-17 is a, what we call a sound level contour map. It's shown, and again, I'll show this to you folks in a moment. It is a computer-generated graphic, very much like a, well, like a hurricane track or temperatures or barometric pressure that you see on the weather reports and so on. And the way it's getting, this is, again, for you folks, what we're looking at here. You can see the four buildings on the site, residences, residential areas around it, streets, terrain. there is an international standard, ISO 9613-2, which deals with how to calculate sound levels outdoors. And it takes into account, of course, distance, the frequency characteristics of the sound source, buildings, terrain, elevations, many, many different things. And this is a computer model, it's a commercial product called Sound Plan, that we've used for well over a decade. And we've got, from Marathon, the site plan, a site plan graphic with the elevation contours, proposed grading of the site, where the buildings are, we have aerial map information, so we can locate typical houses, residential clusters around the area, the roads, all those go into the model. And then we put into it the truck routes and trucks moving around on the site. So where does the truck, so the truck sound information becomes an important part of it. And where does that information come from? Comes from two sources. One, over the 50 years I've been doing this, I've measured a few trucks, and we use our own measured data of truck operations. I have been in way too many truck warehouses dodging tractor trailers, and I care to admit. We measure the trucks, so we have our own measurement data on trucks moving around. We're talking tractor trailers here, by the way, not, not box trucks or step vans or anything else, but full-size tractor trailers moving around. The second source we use is a cross-check, is the US Department of Transportation, through the Volpe Transportation Center, has something called the Transportation Noise Model. They did a massive study on sounds from different kinds of motor vehicles, heavy trucks, medium trucks, light trucks, automobiles, motorcycles, buses, all sorts of things. And you can go get that data and look up things there, punch in a bunch of factors with the speed of the vehicles, for example, type of vehicle, and from that, the heavy truck in a situation like this produces, they say, produces a certain sound level. We don't use that number. It's close. We use a number that's 2 decibels higher than that, because that's what our data shows. So when we do these things, we try to be really conservative about what we're doing. So we have the truck noise. By the way, all this is a function of frequency, it's not just DBA, because frequencies figure into this. Calculations much more complicated than DBA, but in the end, it's DBA, and the sound levels on A-17 are, in fact, in DBA. If you look, you see all these red lines here, if you look really carefully, there's a hot pink, I call it, line, that's the actual truck route. And so in this site, we have multiple trucks driving all around the site, and what it does is it calculates the maximum sound level, not the average, the maximum, this is important. So basically, what happens is, pick a location where a truck is, and then pick a receiver, say, a residence over here, or any place on there, takes the sound from the truck at that location, projects the sound level over at the receiver location for that specific combination, taking into account reflections off of the building, the terrain, all those other factors get in there. And then the model moves the truck one meter and does it all over again. And if that new position is a louder sound level than the first one, then it saves the loudest one. It always saves the loudest sound. So it drives that all around here, always saving the loudest sound. And then we turn the crank on the computer and generate the contour map. So what we have here is projected sound levels around the area, and more importantly, off the site, for the truck operations. Now, you heard the traffic engineer talk about number of trucks, and he came, and his number, and that's consistent with what he and I discussed earlier, was 30 trucks an hour. That means a truck every two minutes on the average. Truck warehouse operations are not the Garden State Turn, the Garden State Parkway, the Jersey Turnpike, they're not this steady stream of vehicles, they're every few minutes a truck drives by. And in fact, if we calculated the average level, that'd be a lot less, because you have a relatively loud truck, and two minutes later, you have another loud truck, and in between, you have nothing, and the average out, and the numbers come down. That's not what we do. We use the maximum sound level. Because that, if the state comes out and does an enforcement action, they don't care what the average is. If you're out there generating a sound every two minutes or every one minute, every 10 seconds, once an hour, that's over the limit, you're going to get a notice of violation. That's why we look at the maximum. There's a red line on here, that's the 50 DBA line. So within that line, like here in, by the warehouse, I think it's D in the upper left-hand corner, you know, right around where the trucks are, 70, 80 DBA, because you're right next to the truck. As you move out, though, it drops off, 65, 60, 55, 50. We go along the backside down here, we have 50 DBA along the edge of the property. We come around here, now things start getting a little louder. So we found out, and by the way, when we did this, they, the first pass at it, they wound up changing the site a little bit. They moved the buildings around, did some things like that, not, not massive changes, but changes. But in the, to the near west, actually, that's sort of more on the north side, I suppose, and the west down towards the road there, we had sound levels that were over. So what can we do about it? Well, what we wound up doing was a sound barrier, and in the model, we can insert a sound barrier, put in lengths, dimensions, other properties, about there. And on this model, to anticipate the gentleman's question that he asked earlier about length and height of the barrier, what we wound up with was 16 feet high from the, how would I describe it here? From the northeast corner of Building A, along the one end side there, and then coming around the corner, back around towards the front, along the Sticklerville. Excuse me. You certainly can't see it standing back, but there's, with the terrain in it, there's berming in the set, we took advantage of that. So what we're doing is screening those closer operations with a sound barrier, and when we do that, the projected maximum sound levels from the operations will not exceed the 50 DBA limit for the residential receivers. The question was, how are sound barriers constructed? The answer is, a lot of different ways. They have to be solid, they have to be of the right dimensions, length and height affect them, and they have to be massive enough that sound going through the barrier, and it will go through the barrier, is significantly lower than what goes over the top of the barrier. It's the limiting factor on sound barrier, that what goes over the top or around the ends. Once that barrier is massive enough, making it heavier, thicker, does absolutely no good because it's what's going over the top or around the ends that's the limit. So a sound barrier does not have to be a foot thick of concrete, and making it that thick does absolutely no good from an acoustical standpoint. So what do they build out of? Well, you could, and I'm not advocating this, two sheets of 3/4-inch plywood are sufficient. No. I said, I prefaced that. Not even decorative plywood? Actually, there is one, so built, barriers are home-built. State of Connecticut does their own, they have plans, and they build them out of basically 2x10s, pressure-treated, of course, tongue and groove or ship lap joint, posts, battened strips, the whole, to maintain integrity there, and they work perfectly fine. And being out of, out of the pressure-treated stuff, they last forever. They're built around New Jersey, it's built wood barriers. Projects I've done have wood barriers in it, but they also have other kinds of barriers. They can be built out of, in some places, if they're doing a lot of, especially on-site tilt-up concrete panels, you can make them out of 2-inch concrete panels. The limiting factor structurally, really, is wind load. They have to be strong enough to, if you build, say, I've done quarter-mile barriers, 16 feet high, that's a heck of a sail. So the foundation work has to be appropriate to hold it, but it's not a mass thing. So commercial barriers, they're built out of wood. There's a company called Plywall that makes a panel, they're used extensively. It's basically two sheets of T-111 plywood, so it looks like housing siding on a 2x4 hollow frame, and there's acoustical reasons why you make it hollow. And they come in panels that are nominally 4 feet wide and 8, 10, 12 feet, and they stack up like Legos. You stain them an earth color. We, you know, there's greens and grays and things like that. We find that, if you like my plywood comment, then you'll love me saying, we generally don't want to paint them aircraft orange. But I have seen them done in camo, for example. They're built out of concrete, they, there are PVC panels that stack like, I guess I'm dating myself if I say Lincoln Logs, but they stack them up like planks, and they're, they're in different colors, and properly done, they last essentially forever.
Mr. Adani, thank you very much. And listen, before, does any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If I read your report correctly, I think you said that, for example, if the ambient is 65, and you have the truck going around, and that's 65, you don't add the two together and get 130?
Correct.
How does that get to 50? If you have a 65...
Well, if it's 65 and the limit is 50, you have a problem, or they have a problem.
But you're not combined, you're saying...
Well, no, it's, you have to, the, the person, the inspector, has to, and that's where, one of the reasons they have to go to a school and get recertified every two years, is they have to separate out the two sounds, what the state calls the neighborhood residual. So if you had an ambient of 65, it really was 65 out there, and they, they do it at different times and stuff like that, they try and get it with that, you can't count, when an airplane flies overhead, you got to ignore that, for example, or a motorcycle goes by, that's a transient sound, you ignore that. After more, what's the general sound? But if it was, excuse me, 65, and the truck is 65, you're going to have a heck of a time measuring it. They're the same. You really couldn't differentiate them. But to sort of answer an implied question in here, when you, and if it was 50 from the truck, and it was 65 ambient, you couldn't do it. And if you read the whole state reg, they would tell you, that's not citable. What you really want to have is an ambient that's 10 or more lower than the sound that you're trying to measure. Because then you can ignore it. This is back to decibels, and 65 and 65 is not 130.
On that first chart that you showed, I think there was at one time, 60 or 70% of the time, it was like 70 or 80?
Well, in, in, in four of these five locations, it was above 50 73% or more of the time.
So what happens in that case, when it's above 50, and now a truck coming by?
It doesn't add anything. Well, it is back to, again, it's back to decibels and how they add. Decibels are what's called a logarithmic function. It's not like money in a bank account. If I have 50 bucks in my bank account, and I put in another 50, I have $100. Decibels are a function of sound energy. So a particular sound source that makes a particular sound level puts out a certain amount of sound energy. If I double the sound energy, when you do the, convert that to decibels, if I double the sound, you get a 3-decibel increase. It would take, for instance, and it takes 10 sounds that are all the same, if you add all 10 together, the total goes up by 10. So if you had 10 sounds, each one that makes 50, together, they would be 60, and your engineer can run and check the math on, maybe on this.
Mr. Adani, the sound study you did was the sound study on-site, correct?
This sound study here was the ambient sounds.
No, I mean the, your A-17.
Well, the second part, the contour maps?
Oh.
Which one?
The second one you did.
The colored one.
Right. That was the sound study?
That's a projection.
From the site, from the site.
From sounds on the site. Again, that's what's regulated, whether it's 20 decibels out here in the neighborhood or 70 decibels out in the neighborhood, it doesn't alter the fact that they're not, the site is not allowed to make more than 50 at night at the residential receivers.
We have one other, one other witness.
Thank you.
Mr. Cost, I, I just wanted to mark his report, too.
Uh, that would be...
I think that's 18. His report. That's Russell Acoustics.
Let me just say something, folks. We have a half hour. How long is it going to take you to go through your presentation?
I'm not sure, but I can't imagine it would be more than 30 minutes.
Okay. I'm going to tell you right now, folks, please, please let me get through this. It's important that we have the public portion. It's, it's, it's one of the most important things that we hear. We're not going to get to it tonight.
What?
No, we're not, we're not going past 11 o'clock. We're going to continue the public portion, you're going to do your presentation, please stay to hear the rest of the presentation. And we will continue this next month, 10, 12.
Excuse me. The mayor's office told me today on the phone, this will follow on until everyone is heard.
It will be, listen.
I was called by the mayor's office today.
October 12th?
Long as this is in the start, before 10 o'clock, everyone in this room has a right to be heard tonight.
Listen, sir, get ready. Please, get out of here. Get out of here. All right? Hey, listen, if you, hey, if you can be quiet, you can stay. All right? Now, listen, we're going to, what was the date?
He said he could stay, right?
This is going to continue on October 26th.
Right.
You have a right to be heard, you have a right to be heard, and we're not going to have time to do it tonight. So we will continue it, but we're going to continue with the, the testimony. Please stay and hear it. Continue, guys. All right, come on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to introduce Tiffany Morrissey.
Stay, come on, stay and hear it. It's important, stay and hear it.
Very good.
Stay and hear it.
Congratulations.
Well, you kept talking.
She's so funny. She's so funny, I love her.
There's a lot of information here we can't really see. If this is all online, then we will be able to review it before we come back. I'm not going to remember this months from now, I'm asking that you simply put it online.